Good evening. Thank you for coming to the City of Lapeer meeting. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I know, Ramona, you have our roll call, so the next thing on the agenda would be, I would like a motion to approve tonight's agenda with an addition, I believe we have, which would be under G five, perhaps?
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we add a lease agreement with Clover's Group Enon for the lease of the Clover School at, I think, G five.
Madam Mayor? I would add, I would like to make a motion to add that to the agenda for G five, did you say?
Please.
But I would like to remove the meeting calendar from the consent agenda until the first meeting in December, which is December 1st, since we have two new board members to let them be part of setting our schedule.
Second? Motion's been made by Commissioner Petrie to add G five and to remove the city meeting calendar, and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there any discussion on that?
My only question, Madam Mayor, my only question is just like, we don't have a weird February meeting? January, or, I'm sorry, January meeting, January 5th and 19th would be the first one, so, not like New Year's Day or something, and maybe the clerk has looked ahead to see?
It's pretty consistent of what it always has been, you know, every year, but maybe, maybe you want to do it the first meeting in December then, or something, if that would include?
First meeting in December gives us time, plus they can be part of it.
And if you guys have any concerns about the calendar, let us know so we can reflect that when it gets to the December meeting, please.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Atwood?
No, I keep it to myself.
Okay, I believe there's no further discussion then. All those in favor of the motions? Motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Now for the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the meeting held October 6, 2025.
Okay, is there support?
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, no. Then, all those in favor of that motion, say yes. Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Tonight is our, for public comments, is our Lapeer County Commissioner Brad Hagedon's here.
Greetings and salutations, as always. Today's a rare week where your meeting falls on our full board meeting as well. So I have five motions that are going to be on our agenda for Thursday. Some of them have come out of subcommittees, so they have not seen the light of day other than in subcommittees. First up is Central Dispatch. They are asking that we renew the contract with Motorola for five years to the tune of $141,000. The Sheriff's Department is asking us to buy two virtual crash investigation softwares to the tune of $21,000. We will be discussing and possibly vote on putting the old Register of Deeds building at 279 North Court Street for sale. We are going to be looking at buying a firewall and breach protection software for the, to the tune of $88,000. And then finally, we have a resolution on our agenda to make November 10 Edmund Fitzgerald Day throughout Lapeer County in remembrance of the 50-year anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald's sinking. I'm a history nerd, so I did a lot of research on that, and hopefully that'll pass and we can honor those 29 men who died. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, anybody else who'd like to make a public comment at this time? Sir, please come on up to the podium, give your name and?
My name's Keith Kingston, and I'll try not to make this too long, okay? But
You have three minutes.
In order to not sound like a bad lung idiot, I put it down on my iPhone so I can keep it short, okay? So, all right, good evening, and thank you for providing me this opportunity to address the board. My name is Keith Kingston, and I live at 821 Peppermill Circle here in Lapeer. I have been trying for the last four years to have an issue resolved regarding the sidewalk at my house. There has been an ongoing problem since I bought my house almost a decade ago, and for the first few years, I waited for the city to take care of it. I live on a corner lot, so I have about 60 feet of sidewalk in front of my house and another 120 feet down the side. My concern is with the condition of the sidewalk on the side of the house. Halfway between my house and the house located behind me on Rosemary, there is 67 and a half feet of crumbling sidewalk, crumbling concrete, that in some places is completely gone, and there are holes in the middle of the sidewalk. In some places, the concrete is no more than a half inch thick, thus the holes have broken through. In my personal opinion, whoever laid that section of sidewalk 30 years ago did a poor job, and if it was supposed to be inspected by the city, that obviously didn't happen. In 2022, I stopped a city DPW employee to show him the problem, and he assured me that he would take this up with his supervisor. A day or so later, I received a telephone call from someone here at City Hall telling me that the city will not do anything about it because it's not a trip hazard. Not a trip hazard. There are holes in the middle of the sidewalk. In 2023, I stopped a code enforcement officer who was driving through the neighborhood and showed him the problem. He agreed that this is a trip hazard, and he said he would pass it along to the proper department. Again, I received a phone call telling me that this is not a trip hazard. That summer, that same summer, I was talking to my neighbor across the street, and Sarah asked me if the city was going to fix the sidewalk, to which I responded, that I was told the city's not going to do it because it's not a trip hazard. To this, she responded, "Not a trip hazard. I have two toddlers, and when we go for a walk, we walk in the street because your sidewalk is so bad, I'm afraid my children are going to fall and get hurt." Last year, right about this same time, I took pictures of this section of the sidewalk, which I have here for you people, whoever wants them, wherever I know they can get them to.
Can you wrap it up in the next slide, or you can come back at the end of our meeting?
I'm sorry?
You need to wrap it up. There's only three minutes for public comment, except that you could continue on if you like at the end of, towards the end of our meeting, that's us.
I'll have a couple more minutes, I'll be done.
Sorry.
Okay.
We have to follow that because of, for everybody. But you're more than welcome to finish that two minutes at, towards the end.
There's a Lions game that starts at 7:00. I was hoping to catch it.
Your point was taken.
I'd love to go, too.
I guess we're going to have to roll through the list.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment at this time? Mr. Petrie?
Holy Spirit, we invite your presence here. Thank you, Father, that we can come to you and share our thoughts with you and our feelings and our hopes and our dreams, even though you already know them. You created the thoughts that swirl around in our heads. Thank you for each person here. Thank you for each person that loves our community. I pray that you'd be with us tonight, help us to make good decisions that affect people positively. Help us to have courage to make difficult decisions. Be with us, Lord, in the rest of our evening when we go from here. Be with each person as they leave here. Keep them safe. Lord, I pray that you bless each one individually in a way that you see fit for that person and their family or people that they surround themselves with. Thank you, Lord, that I can come to you with the smallest and the biggest. Praise you for all the blessings that you've given my family, especially this past year. So grateful for all that you do, grateful for the people in this community that invest in it, that want to be part of our community. Lord, we just ask for your hand of protection on our community, on our state, on our nation. I pray all these things in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, now, we're to our bill listing.
A motion to approve the bill listing for October 20, 2025, in the amount of $474,387.72
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion regarding our bills? Okay, hearing none, then, Ramona, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. That takes us to our, number one, under our administrative reports for the power pole removal.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to approve the removal of 21 existing overhead streetlights, 14 poles, wires, and equipment related to Pine Street, Park Street, and Parking Lot Number Nine project for a cost not to exceed $30,034.50, and authorize Director of Public Works and the City Manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Brady. Is there discussion on removing the poles?
A couple of questions. Number one, we've budgeted like $880,000 for that parking lot?
It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be a very expensive project.
Right. I just wondered, did we budget? Because I did some review. I didn't see a budget in there for lighting. So will this be amended for that, or?
So, Mr. Romero's in the room, if you want to ask him some questions. Something I would just comment on, though, is, you know, we've had a very difficult time with DTE recently. You know, we gave them, I think, what, 10 months notice on the previous project, and they've still failed to, you know, remove those light poles on the tunnel to somewhere. So really, what we're just looking for here is advanced approval from this board. It's not our intention to, like, move forward with this until the start of the project next year, but we want to, like, give advance notice to DT because we don't want to be put in the same position as next year.
So if we decide we're not going to remove them, we can cancel it? This is just putting us in line, putting us in there, key?
Yes. So part of this is, and this is all part of an ongoing discussion internally. We don't want to remove these lights if we're not going to replace some of the decorative lights. You know, we have an assumption of what decorative lights are going to cost, but, you know, ultimately, there may be a tipping point where it's too expensive, and then we just keep the old lights.
So we can cancel if we?
Yes.
My other question is, will we be replacing any overhead or just, right now, we're just talking about the ones that match downtown?
So we're not going to replace the ones downtown? These are?
No, I mean, they're matching.
Yeah.
So will we be putting any overhead back? I'm just thinking of?
I don't think so. Mr. Romero, can you answer that?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, no, the intent is just to get rid of the overhead ones and put all the decorative style. But we would be keeping a lot of them up closer to the building as well. Those are mounted to poles that need to stay because there's some of the other wires already out of them.
I just, I was asking Ross, too, about the lighting. Will it be enough for safety in a parking lot and back there on that street? Because it'll be two-way now, so I just wondered if it, if just the decorative poles, and if we're going to put any overhead back. This didn't say that, so I just was curious.
Part of our contract is to have a photometric drawing for the whole corridor. This is something we have in our hands soon, and then we can make any adjustments. We need to make sure that there is enough light.
And so this is basically, this is changeable. We can change this. This is just to get us in the key, and then we can cancel if we have to.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very complex project, and we obviously want to match what everybody wants it to be. But I agree with Mr. Romero that the photometric plan will be poured over to make sure it has sufficient lighting based upon our standards.
Okay.
Any more questions for Mr. Romero while he's standing there? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the Commissioner regarding the power pole? Okay, hearing no other questions, I'm ready for roll call.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Next one is on premises tasting room permit.
Madam Mayor? Make a motion to approve the resolution recommending Liquor Craft LLC be considered for approval for an on-premises tasting room permit as presented.
Support. Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there discussion on this one?
I just have one question for clarification. Maybe Mr. Francis could answer. I know that we're kind of just replacing. They already have that permit with the current owners. But why is that? Why do they have to have something different for that type of a thing compared to just a liquor license? I just, just for my own personal knowledge, I'm asking.
And I'll assume for purposes they do have that permit. I'm not aware of that. But generally, and the same is the answer with the social district permit. It's just liquor control, does not have transferable permits for certain types, so social districts, one, this is another. They have to come just get new approval. So it is technically a new permit as opposed to a transfer permit.
I'm, yeah, I realize that. I just wondered if?
Just liquor control rules.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Brady?
Is it because there's a brewery on site that that's a mixed tasting room?
Well, I'm assuming they already have that permit in place for the current owners. Is that correct? That's what, I don't know if they do or not.
I was just asking, Ramona, that this is not new for us because we already did it for Tilted, so this is not?
Yeah, then it's the same answer I just gave. There's, it's not a transferable permit, so liquor control requires the whole process. The exact same as the social district one we had out two weeks ago or whatever that was.
But a regular bar doesn't have to do anything like that?
Well, it depends on the permits. So, so the license itself to sell liquor, we don't give approval, yea or nay, on the transfer. It's just permit by permit specific. There's things like an additional bar. So if you're licensed and you have a bar up front and a bar in back, that permit's transferable. They won't come here. It's just there's certain categories of statutory permits that have to be reissued as opposed to transferred.
Okay, thanks.
No further questions? All those in favor of the motion say yes? Opposed, say no. That motion's carried. Next is the Community Center Boiler Replacement.
Madam Mayor?
I think Commissioner Brady would be?
A motion to approve Goyet's mechanical, Goyet Mechanical's alternate bid for the Community Center Boiler Replacement Project 91900 for an amount not to exceed $244,615, and to authorize the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion regarding this motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to praise Mr. Church for coming in with $120,000 below budget. I think that's excellent work.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Did we come in that low, Rodney, because they decided on two instead of three?
Partially, yes. I think I included the base bid on the second page there. The base bids, you know, for the three boilers that was specked out, you know, the lowest bid was $292,629, and there's three or four bids right in that range, and then that went all the way up to $414,000.
Yeah.
So we were going to be on the budget regardless, but going to the two boilers significantly saved money.
Any other question? Okay, we're ready for roll call, please.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Now for the rezoning B2 General Business to a CBD-1 Central Business District.
Madam Mayor? I'd like to move that we rezone, we do a rezoning from B2 General Business to CBD-1 Central Business District at 4 East Nepacine Street, parcel number L20-19-100-040-00.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion regarding this?
Want to check with the clerk?
Yes, sorry, Ramona. Oh, it does say that on the bottom there. Well, we only needed to introduce it. Well, we still have to move it, though. All those in favor?
Yes.
We don't have to vote on it at all?
She's just introducing it.
Okay. That one's G five.
So, Madam Mayor, if I might start out, just so everybody's kind of seeing each other. So first, I'll apologize. It was pointed out to me that I never actually sent this to you by email, which is my normal practice. I did send you guys an email kind of detailing what was going to happen, but I was still trading emails back and forth with the city attorney at the time, so we didn't have the final language, so I apologize for that. Normally, I wouldn't bring it to you guys and ask you to approve it on the same day that you're seeing it, obviously. That's not my goal. It's not governmental transparent. But, you know, the concern is, and I've been working with Mr. But, you know, the concern is, and I've been working with Mr. Creek over at the Clover School to get this taken care of. Basically, the roof is in very poor condition. We're basically going to be transferring the responsibility for taking care of the roof and other maintenance items onto this group, the Clover Group Anonymous. And they're concerned that the longer we wait, the harder it's going to be to put that roof on. So I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, which is, you know, I obviously want the board to be comfortable with approval of this lease agreement. But I also want to give the Clover School group the opportunity to put the, the roof on before it gets really cold and hard to do. So you might want to bring up Mr. Creek who's in the audience and kind of talk to him about that issue, about whether we want to give some kind of preliminary approvals to indicate to him that it would be approved in the near future, so that he can then start lining up roofing or what you guys want to do. Mr. Creek, would you step up to the lectern and tell us your name, please?
Thank you. I'm John Creek. The Clover School has been in a rehab for over fifty years, and we've been maintaining our own building. Only problem is, we've come up with a roof problem, which we will maintain on our own. But we need a permit. Can't get a permit because somewhere along the half a century, nobody knows where the lease is at. So that's why we like to get us a lease. The rough draft was approved by our group and we're all right on with it. And we have a licensed contractor, Stanford Home Improvement, does a lot of your work. They're willing to do it for us. We have the money generated. And let's say, it, it's no cost to the taxpayers. It won't, we'll just continue just the way we always were if we could just get a, a lease. And the lease agreement that I read was very fair to us. We're all agreement. So if you guys could give us a lease or, you know, let us go ahead with repairing the roof, that would be spot on for us. I've been sobering out for twenty-six years. I work out of the Lapeer County Jail, bringing people from there into the Clover School for the turnaround plan for a life worthwhile. So, and it's again, no cost to taxpayers. All we want is a lease. And what you gave us was spot on. Now, we're, we're all agreement with if we could get that, so that's, that's why I'm here. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Francis, just from a, an option to move forward. Without giving them the lease, if the council wants to take, you know, the next week or two to consider the lease, would you feel comfortable with the group extending their insurance to the city to start putting the roof on? Because if, if it's their intention to do the maintenance anyways, I would just be concerned from a liability perspective.
Absolutely. I mean, technically, they're a month-to-month tenant anyhow right now, so they're, it's not like they're trespassers. So I would have no issue with that.
Okay. So if the board would be comfortable with saying, hey, go ahead and start with the roof while we consider the lease, I think that might be an option, if you guys want to review the lease for another couple of weeks.
Commissioner Atwood has a question.
That was going to be my suggestion, is somehow figure out how they can proceed with the roof while we look through the lease, just for transparency purposes. Also, last I knew, the city doesn't require permits for roofs or windows?
Pretty sure we do.
I don't think, last I knew, we did not.
Okay, well, I'm sure that Marilyn is at home screaming at the television right now.
That I'm right.
We'll make sure that they go through the appropriate processes required by the building code.
That's not three windows, what?
The, the, the real issue here is that they just don't own the building.
And I didn't want to authorize them to make structural changes to the city's building if they didn't have the legal authority to do so. So if this board is going to indicate their allowance to do that, and then we have the insurance, I'd be comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, I might be incorrect in that because I think it was residential, Matt.
Yeah, I think it was residential homes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City manager Womack, how is this lease that going to differ from the ones in the past?
Yep, so the, the previous lease agreements basically were not triple net leases. So a triple net lease maintains ownership in the city, so we'll continue to own the building. But it shifts the authority and the cost of maintenance of the building onto the group itself. So that they don't have to keep coming back to the city and saying, hey, can we change this? Can we do this? They would basically be given authority to do it. They have to maintain it at the very minimum, the condition it's in right now, into the future. But, you know, they've had, as far as I can tell, plenary authority over there in that building anyways. I've been here now two and a half years. I've never visited the building because I don't have a key to it.
It's open.
Okay.
Twenty-four, seven.
I, I just haven't stopped by, and it's been there, you're the sole users of the building, right?
Oh, it's been, we've been using that building for fifty-some years. The only problem we have is, you know, we want to repair the roof. And at, well, first, you know, we wanted the city to do that, but you know, our lease agreement is, is one that's really friendly to us. And being that we don't generate any income. It's all done by volunteer and nothing to the taxpayer. We have our own insurance, so we don't have that, and we're going to get a licensed contractor, so we're not, we're not doing anybody with a ladder can throw up some shingles. We're not doing any of that. We're going to go with a licensed contractor.
Well, I can't wait to see the LIVAX planted, planted around it.
Yeah, we do have plants there too.
I think she's offering to give you some mileage.
Commissioner, I just wanted to ask Mr. Creek. So, Mr. Creek, do you have somebody ready to do the roof before winter?
We do. Stanford Home Improvement, and they did the courthouse roof, the dome, and did a lot of work for the city buildings, so yeah, they're licensed and insured.
So you can get that done then, before the cold gets here?
Oh, yeah. We got the money generator for the deposit, the whole bit.
Okay.
So we have fundraisers, the whole bit. Now, the next thing is, is if we could keep the, like, the draft, we'd be, we'd be rolling again for another fifty years. Because, you know, like I said, I work out of Lapeer County Jail. That's where we sent all the people that are willing to change their minds. You've got to be willing to make a change. So it's, it's a good process. It doesn't cost the taxpayer nothing.
Another option is we could set a special meeting, if you guys didn't want to pre-authorize anything. But then we got to pick a date that we could get a majority.
So if we, could I make a motion to wait on the lease till our next meeting, November our next meeting?
Fifth.
Fourth. Fourth. Third, November third, to, to approve the lease, but go ahead and let them do the roof with their insurance extended? If they can have it done before the third?
Mr. Francis, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I just, as long as they provide the insurance and permission to the city manager.
I was going to bring it. I forgot.
No, that's sometime before the word, sometime soon.
But, so when you say the fifth, and I, I come back on the fifth?
Well, we would have, we would have it at our next meeting on November third, the lease, to, so that gives us time to look it over and...
Yeah, realizing this, when you look it over, I mean, because it's, it's definitely fair to us that we are nonprofit and we are doing a service to the community.
Yeah.
Putting a political point.
So, so, so the motion would be that we'll look this over and it would be on our next agenda, but in the meantime...
We'll get the roof fixed.
Yeah, you could start on the roof tomorrow as long as you brought the insurance in.
Okay, so the contractor's going to come do this, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for. So does he go to where to get the permit? Because that's their job. They're going to take care of all that.
Yeah, they'll come here to City Hall.
Okay, and it's all good to go then?
Well, as long as they, they know what they're doing, sure.
Well, they're, they know, they did the courthouse.
Sure. They're probably very familiar with the building department.
Oh, they know, they know you guys. They're the ones that recommend them do this, so.
And then John, give me, get ahold of me tomorrow?
I shall. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Watch it.
Yeah, you can watch the line.
So, okay, so, okay, so motion was made by Commissioner Petry. Do you have that down, Ramona?
What I have is to postpone the approval of of the lease. I was going to add to the four of Clover School. To November third, twenty twenty-five meeting, you have to allow the tenant to begin the replacement prior to such.
So motion was made by Commissioner Petry and supported by Commissioner Brady. Further discussion?
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you guys.
All those in favor of the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed say no? Motion's carried. Thank you for all the work and making care of that.
I appreciate you guys. I think you called Mr. Womack.
Thank you, Mr. Creek.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Womack, what do you have for us?
Are we there already?
Yes, ma'am.
So first thing I have written down here is the America, sorry, American two fifty mural. It's probably supposed to be America. So this is a project that I've been working with Ms. Glickman on. It's part of our kind of preliminary planning for America two fifty, which is coming up quicker than I think I'd like to admit. But Mr. Alt sent me these murals. They're very patriotic murals. And this is similar to the murals that already exist in the downtown, where basically you give each citizen an opportunity to paint a small part of it, and then you combine them all together and it makes the full picture. Let's see if I can find this in our... So this is, looks like page forty-seven of the PDF online. So I guess I bring it to the commission for some discussion. We don't have a location picked out. We don't have funding arranged for it. Right now, all I have is an estimated cost, which is about eight thousand dollars. Ms. Glickman, did I state that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I guess I'm looking for some direction from you guys, whether this is something you guys want to pursue, whether we want to set up a fundraising subcommittee, whether we want to pick one to go forward with, or what's your butcher?
Madam Mayor. The reason I like this project is because it has the ability to have a lot of the citizens participate. When they're done with the mural, and everyone gets a small piece, and they get certain colors and things to work with. But when you put it together, it's a very patriotic theme. And there are several sizes, and the cost is different depending on whether you use a smaller size or larger size. But two hundred and fifty years is a big deal, but I want the people to feel part of it. So that's why when Mr. Womack brought this project to me, I thought, this is really good because we can get up to six hundred people or more involved in the, in the project. And then in the years that go by, a child who's done one of the pieces will now be thirty years old and say, oh, I did that. So I just think it's a really good idea for the, for the history of the city going forward. I don't think it's extremely costly for what you get. But it, we need to work this out because we need to know about where we're going to get the funds, if there's, there will be people or businesses who would want to donate X amount of dollars for, for this project. And then, of course, we have to decide where exactly we would want it, so.
Sounds like a great project. Go ahead. I just wondered, will, will there be anything in our budget in the spring for this?
So great question. So under Michigan law, there's only three holidays that you can send, spend public money on, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, and Veterans Day. So I think we could budget for it. Obviously, it's nice if we can get some donations related to it. But we could budget the full amount.
It would be nice, I think, if we could have a committee not only work on this, but the big picture for Fourth of July, two fifty. Because there's a lot of activities that could be done that don't necessarily cost a lot of money, or that businesses could participate in. I, I really think we need a formal committee to start working on this at this time.
The sooner the better, only because plan your work and work your plan. Yeah.
And do you want us...
Well, we introduce it. We can't do a motion on it. So we have to do a motion at the next meeting.
Form a committee then?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not asking you guys to do anything. You can form a committee now if you want. One thing I would point out, though, is that committees can consist of more than just these board members. So obviously, it helps if you have at least one of the commission members on board, but you can also seek out interested citizens who might be willing to help you on that.
I think there will be quite a few.
Okay.
I think we have it.
What do you call it?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, something?
America two fifty Lapeer.
Or do you want to call it by its formal name? Go ahead and say it.
Semi-quinsentennial. The semi-quinsentennial. I don't think we should put that on the...
Let's just call it, call it the America two fifty.
Yeah, or Lapeer. If you want to incorporate the name of Lapeer, which we should.
America two fifty. Project, because it's going to involve different things.
Yeah.
Ms. Glickman, are you seeking permission from the board to form a subcommittee?
Yes, I am. Do I need a motion for that? No, you just do it, right?
Unless there's opposition. So the subcommittee would then make recommendations back to the board regarding budget and the other things.
I, I think Commissioner Petry would like to be on this also. I always get...
Was that a voluntary?
That was voluntary.
Kind of co-chair it under the auspices of the city manager.
I'm happy to help in any way I can. You're the idea person. I just nod.
Okay.
Okay, then we should, we should be together soon about this, so we can kind of line up how we want to proceed. All right, moving on. Row non-motorized pedestrian access master plan proposal. So I worked with Mr. Ben Keller to apply for a grant from the MDC to help pay for a master plan and a non-motorized plan update. I then asked Row to submit a proposal to complete those, and it came in at approximately thirty thousand dollars, a grant for fifty thousand. I then had a discussion with the MDC about the extra money, because of course you never want to let grant money go to waste. And I think residential housing is going to be a super important thing in this community over the next decade at least. So I made the suggestion that we'd be allowed to use the extra money to hire a subcontractor to really zhuzh up the housing section of the master plan. And I had two companies in mind, Giffords Webster and Progressive AE. I've worked with both those groups. They're great. In talking with Mr. Atwood today, I would also maybe throw in Williams and Works. They're also great to work with. So I guess I'm looking for some direction, both on the master plan, non-motorized plan, and about my idea about kind of subbing out that, that housing part to kind of really get into the details on it. So I'm looking for direction.
I have a question.
Commissioner Swindell?
So Commissioner Brady has said several times, like, we don't need four red lines in our master plan. It needs a whole relook. We need to dig, dive deep and look at it. In the last couple of times, there have been a few red lines, and that was it, and it wasn't really a deep dive and things like that. Did you get quotes from anyone else or only Row?
So for the master plan and non-motorized, I felt because Row helped us obtain the grant and because they're a planning consultant, they're the only ones I consulted about getting a quote.
Okay. Okay.
So we're not obligated under the grant to use Row, but they, I believe they've done the master plans in the past, so they're familiar with the city. And obviously, because they helped us get the grant, I thought it was appropriate to get the first quote from them.
And then just use someone else for the housing section of what it's going to look like?
That's, at least the idea I brought to the board, which is why I'm looking for policy direction at this time.
Commissioner Atwood?
I wouldn't be opposed to opening it up, allowing others to bid on the the plan.
You mean the full plan?
Yeah. Nothing against Row, but I'd just like to see
Consistent.
what else is out there. There's another company, Carlisle Workman Associates. They won twenty twenty-four Master Plan of the Year Award from Michigan Association of Planning.
I'm not familiar with them, but I'm sure they did fine.
Well, I just ask for recommendations from the league.
Yes.
See if they had any one, you know, that they would recommend.
Well, I'm happy to...
The two that you mentioned were on that list, Giffles and Williams.
Yeah, Progressive.
As well as Smith Group.
So I'm happy to reach out to anybody, but like I said, I, you know, I want to bring it to the board with the offer that I had in hand for the proposal I had in hand.
Madam Mayor, I just want to be clear on this, that it looks like there's two parts. And that the first part that you addressed was grant money that Row actually got for us?
They helped get for us.
Okay. I, I think it's kind of a bad policy to get help from somebody and then turn around and give the job to somebody else. But I, I don't know what would be legal in this case. But I, I don't think that it smacks right with me at this point. However, part B should go out to three bidders.
Well, we do pay them for their assistance.
Okay.
So it's not like you're doing the work for free.
Commissioner Brady?
My question was about, like, Giffles and Progressive and Williams Works. Do they do, like, traditional master planning?
Yeah, so I would, I'd go so far as to say that I think that those groups specialize more in master planning than Row does. That's more on their wheelhouse, which is why I think the list that Mr. Atwood had kind of matched up with the same groups that I'm familiar with doing that kind of work.
So it could be, in your, in your fact findings, that sounds like you're going to be doing some fact finding after this. In your fact finding, maybe you could come back or, or bring us, like, what would their, from Giffles, what would their master plan along with that housing?
Like, I could, if that's the direction the board wants to give me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Petrie?
So did we give Row the opportunity also to bid on the housing part or? Because I just think we need to be across the board.
Sure, so, so the proposal from Row is, so the housing part is part of a master plan. You know, they, they gave me a quote for the master plan for the thirty thousand. But I didn't ask them for a special, I forget my use of the word zhuzh, to zhuzh it up. That was just an idea that came to me in the last week or so. So no, I didn't ask them about that part, I certainly could.
I, I would just like to be fair to them and give, if you're going to get bids for the housing part or, and/or master plan part, give Row that opportunity and we bring in all the bids for all of it. So that Row has that opportunity too. And will we be able to find somebody for twenty thousand dollars?
That's the hope. Of course, you can also always set parameters of, you know, here's what we're looking for and here's the dollar money you have to work with.
And so is that common practice to have two different engineers putting together your...
Well, this is more of a planning service than engineer work.
Well, that's what I mean, is it common to have?
It's not unheard of.
Then would they work together?
To a certain extent. I mean, when you sub out a big section like the housing part, that would mostly be independently done, which, you know, can then create problems because it's going to look like it's done by two different people because of lives. But like I said, I think the housing portion is going to be so important, not only in this community, but all communities in Michigan over the next decade, that I think we need to spend a little more time on it.
Okay. Commissioner Brady?
So it sounds like there could be a benefit in order to, like, let somebody focus on that housing piece while somebody else is working on the other bulk of the work of the master plan. So I guess I'd be open to seeing two different companies working on it if we thought we were going to get the best of both of those companies for the parts that they were doing.
Okay.
Okay. So I have my direction, I will reach out to some more companies, get some more quotes and bring that back to you guys as soon as possible.
Are you going to also ask Row to look at the housing part so we have their input too?
That was part of the direction that you gave me, yes. Yep, thank you. Last I have here is the citizen survey and Commissioner Cole's objective survey that we put together. I hate to admit this, but I didn't get time to go, kind of go through and, you know, pull out the insights I was hoping to bring out. But I also didn't want to be accused of, like, hiding the information. So this information is out there for anybody to go see. There are some very choice and colorful words expressed in there, which we did not redact, not hiding anything. But I wanted to put it in front of you guys, if you have any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns right now. And then we're hoping to put together more of a, here are the insights we have. Ms. Swindell and I talked a little bit about this today. One of the things we noticed, first of all, is there's only about a one point five percent return rate, which is really, really low. Which, you know, it's partially our fault for maybe not getting out the word as much as maybe we needed to. And then you also looked at some of the other insights, such as the highest return rate, were people, what, fifty-five and above?
Sixty-one plus is nearly fifty percent.
Which, by the way, matches.
Means they have time.
Matches the, the return rate we had in my previous community where we did a very similar survey. So I think there's a lot we can learn here. And I think this can help guide us moving into the future for better ways to get more people interested in taking this type of survey. One of the things that Ms. Swindell and I talked about today was, well, maybe we just literally need to go to the rec center, set out a table and say, hey, you're under fifteen years old, here's your QR code, please take this. But, you know, I read most of it. There's some, there's some interesting things in there that we're going to take another look at for potentially doing. We, we really do take this stuff seriously, so we appreciate all the people who took the survey and gave us some ideas. So I guess I'm looking for any feedback about either one of these, anything you guys would like to see.
One thing that I did notice that it's ninety-seven percent homeowners took the survey. So they have a very vested interest in what we're doing. I'm just disappointed that there was so few that took it.
Yep, so I think primary, because this was almost identical to my previous community. At least part of the reason for that is because the way we get addresses is for, you know, tax ownership of a property or utility access. Well, if you're not the owner of the home, you're probably not getting that mail. Now, we did try to get the word out to the people living in rentals, but obviously we weren't that successful. Or they just didn't take as much ownership into the community, didn't feel like filling it up.
Commissioner Brady?
I, I will express some survey fatigue at the survey. It's, it was, there was a lot to kind of get through.
There was a lot, yeah.
And maybe, you know, some of the best information was how do you want to be communicated with? And that could be an action step real early and then you could build. Once you have a conversation going, it's a lot easier to ask smaller bits of information as you go. So I guess that's my takeaway from it was, people were pretty clear about how they wanted to be communicated with. I don't really want a staff person coming up with a newsletter that's a daunting, as a teacher, that is a daunting task to try to come up with a newsletter all the time. But this seemed like emails or short, short, shorter form communication might be better.
You know, my staff told me I have to put together between now and when, Ms. Hannah, November or something? Yeah. We got a newsletter I got to put together.
Good. Any other comments?
I liked how, well, City of Lapeer Facebook page, a lot of people get their info from that and the Lapeer City website. Also, the county press, they get their stuff from the county press. So you won on that one. Uh, yeah, I agree. You know, just, you know, at least we're willing to try these things and hear the feedback. Trial and error, you learn as you go and you can always master the craft, you know, and make it better. Yeah, it's a start. Got to start somewhere. That was it.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have for this section, thank you.
Okay.
For city attorney's report, Mr. Francis, what do you have?
There is a closed session request, that would be my only report.
Okay. And Commissioner Brady?
Motion to enter into a closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting to discuss a written legal opinion from the city attorney, which is exempt from disclosure as provided under Section Eight of the Open Meeting Act.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell for discussion regarding the motion.
It's a two-thirds vote, by the way, just started.
Ramona, could you do roll call, please?
Sure.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glissman?
Yes.
Motion's carried. We will continue with the, our meeting and then adjourn when we, not adjourn, but when we get to the end of the agenda, then we'll go into closed session. Okay. Unfinished business on boards. Was there anybody to appoint? I didn't see anyone. So there's no appointments tonight. In your packet, of course, you had all the departmental communications and great reports. And now we are back to public comments. Keith, would you like to finish your sidewalk conversation?
I apologize, I didn't realize it was going to be limited to three minutes, because mine's probably twice that. I'll try to talk fast, okay? As, as I already said, I brought the pictures, these special pictures were taken a year ago, right about this time. And those are the ones I took to Mike's office, okay? And Mike, I could be wrong, but I believe you told me that you had walked a property and actually looked at that. I could be wrong about that, but I think you said you saw some damage there and agreed. The problem was, as Mike said, there's no money in the budget to fix it. So he said, we'll look at it again next year when hopefully we have more money available, okay? So a few weeks ago, the crews came out and started replacing sections of sidewalk throughout my neighborhood, including in front of my house, okay? But they didn't do anything along the side of my house. So I thought, okay. So I came back to City Hall and I didn't talk to Mike, but I talked to the secretary and reiterated the discussion Mike and I had last year. And that was kind of the end of that until a few days later, when they came back to take the forms and everything out. They, they replaced, I think, three sections of my sidewalk in the front of my house, okay? And they did a great job, except they damaged my sprinkler system. So I talked to Mike, or excuse me, what was his name? Wein, Weinman, Mr. Weinman? And he came out and he repaired it, no problem. But when I, I mentioned to him that nothing was done about the side of the house where I was hoping something would be done. He called me back the next day and he said that the, the city isn't responsible for that. That is up to the homeowners association to take care of it. But there's only two problems with that. Number one, we don't have a homeowners association, okay? And number two, when they were replacing sections of sidewalk throughout the neighborhood, there's a house on the opposite end of Pepper Mill Circle that is a corner house and it's a sidewalk. And they did already repair the sidewalk in that section. So that made no sense to me, okay? So now I, I don't want, I don't want to sound like the sky is falling. This has been a problem for a number of years before I, before I moved to Lapeer, okay? And so far, no one's got hurt. But in my opinion, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Last October, last Halloween, I had two hundred and forty-nine kids come to my house. I expect a similar number this year, okay, unless it rains. Most of those kids are going to walk, walk down that sidewalk, walk across that broken concrete, across those holes, in the dark, wearing masks. It's just a matter of time before someone gets hurt. If that happens, I'm sure, I have no doubt, that there's going to be a lawsuit. And I'm going to be named in that lawsuit and so is the city of Lapeer. Now I'm going to ask you to make a decision, okay? By just making the city aware of it, that something needs to be done at some point, okay? And I just wanted to have my opportunity to say, anything you do, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Womack will get back with you, you're probably...
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
What, I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Womack will get back with you in the next couple of days. Is that good?
Sure.
I've done what I, I've said what I want to say, now I just...
Thank you.
It's up to the city as far as I'm concerned, so, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Brian?
Good evening, I'm Brian Clutier. For several weeks now, we've been getting the packet along with you, not that we can't read it on the website. One of the things I've noticed, though, is that, and, and I don't know if I just missed it, but I looked at several packets. And I'm not seeing anything like a budget versus actual in the packet. I don't know if that's something you get maybe on a quarterly basis or if it's something you get, like, I would think you should be getting something like that once a month. And if you're not familiar with what the budget versus actual is, it's basically a financial statement that tells you where you currently are with your budget. But you get one...
Somebody else?
No, assuming no.
Quarterly or?
Every...
Yes, that information is provided to the commission every quarter?
Once a quarter? Okay, that's fair. And I don't know that, so I'm just asking. I know I've not seen one. And I think in the decisions that you're making, you're spending a lot of money. So maybe even more frequent than a quarter might be, I mean, yes, the nation print fairly easily, your, your software that you have. So I, I would suggest you have one a little, maybe once a month, so you can see, but it's up to you, but it's just my recommendation so that you can see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come in.
Hi, Peggy Broski, Lapeer Township. I'm on the Lapeer Library Board and I just wanted to address something that was said at the, the Lapeer Tea Party. We had two candidates there, Mindy Schwab and Jeremy Hing. And...
And Brian.
During...
At the, at the library?
No, this was, this was at the Lapeer Tea Party.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Can you just address?
So Mindy stated that she was sorry to hear that the library was in shambles. And I just wanted to speak about that because in my opinion, the library is not in shambles. I know we've been in the news and we have been, it is true, we've been without a director, but we have an assistant director that's doing a phenomenal job, taking on both roles. It is true that we've had staff turnaround. But again, our assistant director has hired new staff. In fact, at the September Board, Library Board meeting, I presented a motion to stop ordering books because, because of the staff turnaround. I didn't know that there was enough people with experience that would be ordering the books. She presented a case to please hold it until the next meeting because she was in the process of hiring staff. So we did, we did put it on hold. And then that motion was presented again at the October meeting. And she brought in two new staff members and they presented a very good case that, yes, they did have experience. And so we withdrew that motion and decided to move, you know, forward with letting the book ordering go on. So I just wanted to say that the library is open. All the services are still there, all the programs are wonderful there, everything is up and running. And I just wanted to clarify that, that our Lapeer Library is not in shambles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Bill.
Hello, sir, how are you?
I just still want to thank you for processing the change of zoning. And I thought it always finalized tonight, I'm learning. Also, I thought I'd get a birthday present tonight, it would be ninety-eight Wednesday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
The zoning is one of the three things. I have, I, I'm not sure how to get that building at the end of the street condemned, I think it's condemned, but knocked down, which will help in the, when we rebuild the gem. And let's see, oh, the other thing is, I'm not sure I need the fifty percent for apartments behind, residents behind commercial. I really, no one's told me when that's going to happen. I'd appreciate if someone would let me know. And now that Jim, is it Jim Howe?
Jerry.
Howe. Now that we're buddies, you better look out. I just met him five minutes ago. I really would, I, I need all the help I can. And I'd like to introduce you to Steve Unrope, a former state trooper, injured on the job. And now he's one of my project managers for this because I go away in six weeks to Florida and don't come back till June. So hopefully, come back a lot of... So, hopefully, come back, a lot of activity will take place. And, any questions?
No, just thank you for what you do.
Happy birthday.
In our community, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Happy winter in Florida.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Are you hiding from me?
Okay. Closing comments from the commission.
Commissioner Petrie.
I can relate to Mr. Kingston, and I won't go into the details of that, but Ramona kind of knows. I had a little mishap with one of our sidewalks this, this weekend, so. But I'm not going to sue the city. Part of it was probably my own fault, but it was. Yeah, so, I hope.
That sidewalk doesn't give, though, does it?
No, it doesn't, and when you're this old, it hurts much worse than, you know, 20 years ago. But I hope we can rectify that for, for Mr. Kingston. I wanted to talk about what happened downtown Friday for the event that was planned called Stars Hollow for the Gilmore Girls. I've lived here my whole life, and it was unbelievably phenomenal. I, it was so exciting, the energy, the number of people, the lines out to the street at every single retail shop. People were happy, they didn't care that they were waiting in line. It was just phenomenal. The owners of Excadia actually organized it and put it on, and then all the businesses, all the retail worked together. It was really a sight to see. I talked to, I took it upon myself to interview people, and it was amazing, there were people there that traveled from Illinois, another person traveled from Ohio to come to it. And I know the Gilmore Girls has a following, but these people had been to the one in Brighton two years ago, then Brighton did it again this year. And they said, this was unbelievable for your first time, will you do it again? And several store owners were gathered and said, we want to do it again. And so they said, we'll be back. It was just, somebody did a count, one of the store owners, and they had a rough count of over a thousand at one point, and it had doubled by the second time. So, I was, I'm not good at guesstimating, but I, I know there was over 2,000 people down there. And, and people were happy to wait in line. The Doghouse had a line all the way into Nepusine Street, the entire four hours. Cherries was out the door the entire night. Hummingbird House was almost all the way down to the Pix Theater. Excadia was all the way around the corner from the dentist office into Choice One, so. It just, it just did my heart so much good to see that people love our downtown and want to come down there and, and patronize, and it was family-friendly, there were people with strollers, and it was, it was just phenomenal. I just wanted to tell Mr. and Mrs. Herr? Herr? Bravo. It was, it was so great, and thank them for that. And all the, all the businesses that, that participated, they just did such a great job at being part of it. And then, one apology, I'm not great at posting on Facebook, I don't like Facebook. I tried to post pictures, and I'm not sure how that came out, but I didn't get to get most of them at the East End. It kind of, I kind of stopped after tilted, because it got dark and I couldn't, so apologies to whoever didn't, whatever businesses didn't get in the pictures, it was not my intent, but I tried to put on their, just what happened downtown. The pictures didn't do it justice, you kind of had to be there to feel the energy, but it was just, bravo, bravo.
Commissioner Brady.
I have no comments tonight.
Commissioner Kalisman.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say how nice it is to see Jack and Susan Stone tonight. They were friends of mine for many years when I lived in Oakland County, so, nice to see you both. The other thing I want to do is I want to commend our Parks and Rec Director Rodney Church for the cemetery board meeting, everything went smoothly. I did find my packet after the fat. Under a pile of papers on my desk. But I'm very impressed with all the people who were there, they truly care about that cemetery and the appearance of it and its historical value. Secondly, we're still working on that super-duper lilac project, and we will be planting lilacs. Yes?
I was going to say, it'll announce tomorrow, because we have to change the date.
Okay, sometime this week, sometime this week, we will be planting the lilacs. I have nursed all summer long. And I want to shout out to Commissioner Petrie. She's made valuable relationships with the people at Lapeer Home Depot and at Wojo's for help with this project, and they will assure us that they will have a lot of lilacs for us in the spring. And I got to tell you, I talked on the phone today two times to Melissa, and it was all about the Gilmore Girls.
I'm sorry.
I got to tell you something, she was so excited about it, and I have never watched that program, so I, I guess I'm going to have to start watching it, so I know what actually happened. Now, to this day in American history, for my good friend here, City Manager Womack, the Battle of Yorktown, and if you watch any of the history documentaries on TV, you know what an important battle that was. And it was on, between September 22nd and today, October 19th, that we beat the, we beat the redcoats. The British, we beat the British, and we started the birth of a new nation. So, October 19th, 1781, ended with an American victory. And, let's see, if there's anything else I need to do. One more thing. The quote from the American Revolution comes tonight from the third president, Thomas Jefferson. "I think myself that we have more machinery of government than is necessary. Too many parasites living on the labor of the industrious. Government big enough to satisfy everything you need is big enough to take everything you have." That's from Thomas Jefferson. I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Swindell.
I only have one meeting left after tonight, but I would like to throw it out there that this sidewalk thing that Mr. Kingston came to this evening is yet another product of ordinances we have, we don't enforce. And we do some, and we don't do others, and maybe we special assess over here, and we'll fix your sidewalk, but not your sidewalk, and who decides that? And what is enforced and what is not? The ordinance clearly states it's the homeowner's responsibility for maintenance, repairs, and replacement. And even if the city gets sued, it still goes back to the landowner, is exactly what the ordinance says. And we have never, we aren't doing it that way, so people think that the city has fixed over here at my neighbor's house, so why didn't they fix mine? When in reality, it's the landowner's responsibility. But because it's never been enforced, done that way, unfortunately, you know, people think that the city should fix it. A hundred and eighty feet of sidewalk is not a little bit of sidewalk, and that's not a cheap fix at all. But it's just another thing where we have these ordinances in place, but we don't really enforce them. And we decide that apparently his neighbor needed some, but he didn't, because his wasn't bad enough, and I see the pictures, it's pretty much gravel, and it needs to be done. But the city doesn't do that enforcement, and he has encountered through the four years, people from the city, and no one said, it's, you know, your responsibility, unfortunately. It's your sidewalk, and it's your responsibility to replayer it and maintain it, and even, it clearly states even if you get sued, even if the city gets sued, that the expense goes back to the homeowner and the expense that the city might incur. So, just keep an eye on things and start enforcing perhaps what we already have in the books. And if we don't like what we have in the books, fix what we have in the books, because, you know, only enforcing things halfway, or sometimes, or for some people, is, it's just not good, it's never been good. And we ran into the same problem with the special assessment district, sometimes we charge and sometimes we don't. So, those things need to be looked at and fixed. That's it.
Yeah. It's been a full and rewarding September and October here in the city of Lapeer. Number one, we've been blessed with good weather, and I think that helped out. A lot of things, especially downtown, I've noticed a lot more people coming down here. But also, I had the honor of attending the Michigan Municipal League Convention in Grand Rapids, where I officially stepped into the role of league president. The conference was incredible, from top to bottom, all the classes I attended were really, really good. We did get a little bit of feedback with one of the city managers, which we were able to give him some more info to, to study it on, I think it was AI, but I could be wrong on that. But we laughed together as municipal leaders, we cried together, and when I say cried, we literally cried together. And I was humbled to give a heartfelt speech about the importance of local leadership and community. And it reminded me just how special it is to serve a place like, like the city of Lapeer, and to represent the values that make our city stand out across Michigan. And that's what I hope to bring at that level, is a number one, recognition of Michigan. You know, Michigan's been not competitive in a lot of areas, and that's something I hope to help out. But also bring a spotlight to the city of Lapeer and Lapeer County, and hopefully bring some good attention our way. Maybe get some of these projects done, maybe I'll have a little more leverage on that end of it. But that's not the reason why I do it. Reason why I do it, while I love the city of Lapeer, I also love the state of Michigan, and I love local municipalities. And I have a special heart for city managers, elected officials, and employees, because, number one, your bosses are always changing, and that's a complicated, complex issue on its own. You got to be pretty crazy to be a city manager, to deal with all the stuff that they have to deal with. And you have to be crazy to be an elected official, because all the stuff that we have to deal with. And, you know, I was very open and honest during my speech. The last five years has been pretty, pretty rough on me mentally, a lot of you wouldn't know that, but I was in a state of depression. And that happens from time to time, so I've reached out, I have accountability partners, hired, I guess, a life coach, just to work through stuff in, in my roles, because I want to be as effective as I can as a leader. So, first, number one, I got to be effective in leading my home. Number two, I need to learn how to be an effective leader for the city. Number three, I have to learn how to be an effective leader at the state level. And that would require me to look at myself and see what's going on internally, and work on that. So, I've asked multiple people in my life to give me feedback, open and honest feedback on my demeanor, attitude, and how I'm treating people in, in that aspect. So, I'm hoping to hear back from them, just to help me grow as a leader in general. Back at home, I've been spending lots of time staying connected with people in our community. And that's what makes our, our communities thrive, is the people that live within and own businesses within. I recently went on a ride-along with our fire department, I was told I have the first city commissioner to do that. As well as a few months earlier, or a month earlier, I went on a ride-along with our police department, just to see how they do on the day-to-day operations, to check in, see how I can help maybe on a policy level, or give ideas to the city manager on how we can better work on those departments, if there's any areas that need to be worked on. Fire department's great, police department's great, nothing exciting happened during my ride-along, so they promised me to give them a call anytime, and they'll come pick me up, so I can see some, some action. But, you know, it's a sacrifice on my end as well, I, I work, I have a day job, so I sacrificed my time at work and spent the time at the fire department. They had a training class I went to, and then I did some ride-alongs with the fire marshals to see how they do stuff, and communicate with our businesses and fire safety. So I gained a deeper appreciation for the professionalism and the heart they bring to every call that they go to. Very, very professional, police department and fire department. I also have been handing out thank you cards for visiting the downtown area and the city of Lapeer. I carry them with me wherever I go with a handwritten note, actually, I go up to them, I thank them for visiting the city of Lapeer. Not sure when the last time anyone's ever come to a city and been given a thank you letter from an elected official. Something I started last year, I'd go to homes that had nice landscaping and well-done homes, and I'd walk up and give them a thank you card for, for investing in the city. So it's doing the small things that actually make a huge impact. One of the couples actually said that they're moving to the city of Lapeer. So, that makes a long-lasting impact, and that's what we need to do. I've also had great conversations this past month with local business owners and investors who continue to believe in Lapeer's potential, and I'm encouraged by their excitement for what's, what's ahead, and the projects that they have in store, like Mr. Stone. I just want to thank him for his interest in that corner property, as that's been kind of a bad area in our city for a while. So I appreciate that, and I will hope that we can get with the project manager and make sure he has all the information they need, and know where they are in the process. As far as the more community stuff, they really showed up. The ghost tours I noticed downtown were very, very successful, they had over 200 people attend those. Every, every ghost tour they did downtown was, was packed. And I actually forgot about, I was riding my bike around, and what are all these people, and I stopped to talk with James. So that was very well-attended. And then, also, the Gilmore Girls event, which is already mentioned, I was told by Chris that it brought in nearly 2,000 people. I was not able to attend, my girls had volleyball, but I texted Chris after the volleyball and asked how it was going. It was amazing to see our local businesses pull together and create such a lively and positive energy for our city. It's cool that no entity created this, it was all done by the business owners themselves, by an idea. And, you know, they might not have thought it was going to be that big, but obviously, it was pretty big and pretty successful. I also talked to other business owners down there, and it was probably one of their best nights of the year, which bypasses Lapeer Days and all those other events. Like Commissioner Petrie mentioned, lines, there were literally 40-minute waits to get into the store. I don't remember the last time that's ever happened downtown. So, when you're planning events, something to, to, to look at and think about when you're planning, how can you better get the businesses involved and get people into their doors? Very important. These moments and those moments I mentioned, from a statewide leadership to local connection reminds me of the progress. It's not just about what we do in this chamber, it's about relation, relationships, gratitude, and community pride. And thank you, everyone, for listening to my ramblings. You all make Lapeer such a special place to live, work, and visit, so keep up the good work. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. You keep up the good work, you've been doing fantastic for us.
Commissioner Womack, what do you have for us?
It's always hard to follow, Josh.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to try to power through a couple of things here. So something that just came up this week is the possibility of removing the pavilion in Roden Park that's off Pine Street. It's in dilapidated condition, it's, I think, become a hangout spot for inappropriate activities, so that's something we're going to take a look at. I met with Mayfield Township this week, we've got a small boundary line issue with them regarding one of the developments that's ongoing. So I proposed a 425. So I proposed a 425 addendum, and they were enthusiastic in support of that. So I'm working with the city attorney right now and drafting language for that, which we have to come to our board and their board. It's a very minor issue, but we gotta resolve it. Updating the administrative memos, I've been working with the staff upstairs and Ms. Hannah to update the memos that you guys get with all your agenda items. You know, we'd like you guys to have a better insight about how the money's being spent, where it's coming from, the bids, how many bids we got, why we didn't maybe get three bids, et cetera. So you're gonna see that rolled out here shortly. I got news today that Grace and Butter Bakery had their final plans mill reviewed and approved. That's literally from today. I believe they're looking at maybe a December-January opening time. Leaf pickup, the Deep W's been doing a little bit of early leaf pickup. I put out on social media recently that, you know, if you have leaves ready to go, contact them, call them, send them an email. They'll do their best to accommodate you. And then, what, first week in November is when we're planning to start full-on. And then taking feedback from the commission from last year, we've developed a map along with the policy guidelines we're gonna put out there in the world soon. If it didn't fall over, something's still up there. So we're gonna start putting signs out again. We're gonna start putting them at the entrance to the neighborhoods where we're gonna be in, what, two days or so, so that people can have a couple days to kind of get the leaves out to curb. I think that kind of encompasses kind of what you guys were looking for. Halving lights. Please come to City Hall, please come to Public Safety, please come to Housing Department. This is super important to me. I don't want kids getting run over as part of their trick-or-treating. I don't want this fly to bug me anymore. But we have a ton of these, we want to give them away, please stop by and get those. Gilmore Girls event, I've heard wonderful things, both from Brighton and locally. And I'm a little surprised that they didn't get a special event application approved. I understand it was kind of organically done, so maybe they didn't know. But I've had some discussions recently, and we're gonna talk about getting, you know, the appropriate approvals for next year. Newly-elected officials, we have at least two of them in the room. I know that Mr. Hain was here earlier, he had to leave early. Looking forward to working with you guys wherever it's elected. We're gonna bring you on board and give you all the information. Looking forward to a whirlwind of time with you guys. We also took feedback from the newly-elected officials from last time about how to maybe onboard them a little bit better. So there'll be lots of meetings in your guys' futures. Welcome bags, just a period of what Ms. Randwood said. The city has welcome bags that we now give to new businesses and new citizens moving into the community. That's something we started. Gives them all sorts of information, and I think some kind of goodies that the businesses have donated to us. And then the last thing I have is, Ms. Wendell's correct. 12-6 of the ordinances requires that the homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks. You know, and I guess what I would say is, the staff have, and the city has a vested interest in making sure that the worst sidewalks are taken care of, because we don't want people to get hurt, right? That's one of our primary goals here as government officials. Problem is, we just don't have $10 bajillion to replace all the sidewalks that are in bad condition. So we do our best on a yearly basis to shave sidewalks, replace sidewalks, put down cold patch over tripping hazards. I worked with the homeowner last year, did walk the property, you know, it's a bad sidewalk, no doubt about it. What he didn't tell you is that there were some tripping hazards that we did take care of last year. So I'd love to replace the sidewalks, you know, but I don't have all the money in the world, and the ordinance says he's responsible for it. So I'll reach out to him again tomorrow and talk about some options. If the board wants to give me some direction, I'd be happy for it, but, you know, it's just not easy sometimes to get everybody what they want. And I guess from a history thing, I feel bad now you took my first one, is Viggo Mortensen, it's his birthday today. And you might know him better as Aragorn from the trilogy of Lord of the Rings. It's his birthday, happy birthday. That's all, yeah, thank you.
Well, I just have a few local events to, for reminders for you. You can tell it's fall, because there's not many events, three left. The East LaPierre Farmers Market, which is Saturdays, which is at the TSC 1203 Inlay City Road, that continues. The historic Farmers Market is Wednesdays and Saturdays through October 25th. So Saturday is it, Wednesday, and this Saturday. And then the Downtown Development Authority, their Treat Walk is Saturday, October 25th, and that's from noon to 2:00. And you should just come down and do some shopping and look at all these wonderful costumes these little children have. It's fun to see them. I like to see them, so. And with that, I believe we can go on to our closed session. Thank you for being here.
You have to start in the morning just to get the dew off.
Debbie, it's forty-five.
I gotta cover my plants.
Madam Mayor, are there any other further actions of the Commissions?
Are we ready?
Yes.
No further business on our agenda. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I get only two more times to hit that ballot.
How exciting, huh?
Yeah.
Debbie is the hen and where's the gavel?
No, um, I just...
What's the score of the game?